Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance and the invocation following. Pledge of Allegiance to the God in the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear God, please bless our elected officials. Grant them the wisdom to know and the courage to do what is right for all citizens. Amen.
Amen.
Roll call, please.
Alan.
Here.
Green.
Here.
LaFleur.
Here.
Ms. Stravich.
Here.
Ricks.
Here.
Warren.
Here.
Yarick.
Here.
Good to see everybody here tonight. We need the approval of the minutes for the council meeting that was held on November 16th.
So moved, support.
Most been moved and supported. Any discussion on the minutes? I have one correction that I just caught today. Page four or five, under comments by myself, towards the bottom, it says 1217. It's just a typo. It should be 1207 for the next council meeting. Hopefully, I didn't say seventeen. I could've. I could've. That's the only thing I saw. Was there anything else? Being that all in favor, the motion is signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We move on to audience comments on any non-agenda items. I don't see anybody here. That's not on the agenda. We'll move on. Adoption of agenda, Mr. City Manager, any changes?
No changes.
City Council, any changes? If there's no other discussion, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented. Support?
Motion made and supported. There is no discussion on the consent agenda motion. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have five items for consideration this evening. The first one being consideration of Recreation Board Bylaws Amendment. Mr. City Manager.
Council is scheduled to consider approving changes to the Recreation Board Bylaws that would reduce the board membership from seven members to five. Over the years, we've discussed with the Recreation Board and our other boards, kind of the optimum number of board members on each of the boards, and have looked recently to reduce that number as it's becoming harder and harder to find volunteers to fill those positions. Most recently, we reduced the number on our, I believe it was the Board of Zoning Appeals, from seven to five. The recreation bylaws require that they, any changes to their bylaws go for a kind of a first reading, and then a second reading and adoption at the Recreation Board, which they did at, I believe, their September or October and November meetings, and they're submitting them to council for their consideration.
Very good. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the draft Recreation Board bylaw change to reduce the board membership from seven to five.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there discussion? As John said, this has been discussed for quite some time, and council's also discussed it, I believe, in workshop settings over the last year or so, and through attrition, we are down to four, and hopefully, tonight, we appoint a new member to round out to five. Any other discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
It's important, I think, you said, we talked about this a long time, but it shouldn't be seen as excluding the public at all. I think it's just been a matter of difficulty filling the seven spots and that trying to adjust to make sure they have quorum and they still function.
Right. Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Item number two is consideration of Recreation Board appointments. Mr. City Manager?
There's two board applications before you tonight. One, Gina Caperton is actually currently serving on the Rec Board. She would be a reappointment for the term ending in 2017, and we also have one new application, Michelle Aiken, who would be an appointment to an existing term that actually ends in 2016. All three of the vacant terms, well, now one, the one vacant term unfortunately ends in 16, so that's kind of why you have Gina's term 17, and if council still chooses to appoint Michelle, it would be to a term ending in 16.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Gina Caperton to the Recreation Board for a two-year term with an expiration date of March 31st, 2017.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion? Took us a while to hunt her down and get the paperwork filled out, but she's been coming to the meetings all along anyhow, but we appreciate the fact that she's signing back up again for another two-year stint on the Recreation Board. So, good job. Any other discussion? Being that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We have one more opening.
I make a motion to appoint Michelle Aiken to the Recreation Board to fill a vacancy with an expiration date of 3/31/2016.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Is there any discussion?
I'm very excited that Michelle has volunteered to be on this. She has wanted to be involved in things, and I think this is a great fit for her. So, a perfect person to be on this board.
Very good. Actually, it was a recommendation that came from Margot Van Hove. Called her up and said, "We gotta fill that one more spot." I said, "Who's over using the parks a lot?" And she come up with a couple of people and got ahold of Michelle, and she jumped at the chance, like you said, Jamie. We appreciate her signing up. Any other discussion? Being that, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. We thank both of them. Okay, we got, move on to number three, consideration of Pound Road Improvement Project. Mr. City Manager?
City Council is scheduled to consider approving the layout of the Pound Road Improvement Project. Normally, when we do a road project, it's in the budget. It goes to Planning Commission and out to bid from there. On road projects where we're kind of, the road project will itself change kind of the nature of the layout, such as like Ridge Street where we narrowed it a little bit and did the curb and gutters, or Pound Road where we're gonna end up going from a non-curb road to a curbed road. We kind of give council a chance to take a look and have input into the layout that the engineers and our Public Service Director have put together. The existing roadway up there is currently 21 feet of pavement, but then it has either gravel shoulders or ditches. The new roadway will be 31 foot back-to-back with curbing. The curb that we've looked at and selected is kind of a four-inch rolled curb versus the six-inch highback, which is kind of our standard. That assists with how far we have to cut the road down. It also gives those residents that have been kind of used to being able to pull off into their front yard there the chance to do that. They may have to go a little slower, but it still allows that versus the six-inch standard curb that we've been using would prevent it. But yet, at the same time, still gives DPW assistance when plowing and keeping them in the roadway versus people's front yards. So, kind of chose the middle option there. Also, as I've, we've laid out in our background brief and in Jim's memo somewhat, as we discussed during the budget, this project will impact the Road Improvement Fund as well as the Water Fund. In our review, Jim and I have taken a look at that and believe it's still the best option to move forward with this project. The water main is the worst that we have in town, and we're out there quite a bit, especially in the winter, making repairs. That in combination with the easterly portion of the road, it makes it next up on the list. We believe that next year's, the following year's road project, Diane Lane, can probably be moved back out, which gives us a little bit more wiggle room should bids come in more. Obviously, as we outlined, the improvement to the economy, which is a great thing, unfortunately, the negative of that is some of the road projects are coming in higher than anticipated, so where that will exactly be, we don't know until it's bid. With that, Jim is here tonight, as well as Jerry Decatur and Ken Kingsley, to kind of answer any questions you may have on the design layout.
Thank you. Is there a motion before discussion?
I'll make a motion to proceed with the bid process for Pound Road Street Reconstruction Project with the layout as presented.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Okay, discussion. Go right ahead.
Just out of transparency, I have a pound road resident. I don't think it violates charter, but if I went to, if I need to be excused from the voter discussion, I would accept that.
Anybody have any problems with Jeff participating in this discussion?
No. No.
No, you're good. You're good. Okay, I got a couple of questions, and one just popped up when you were saying this out loud. We've had a, I believe, I don't know if it's written, but we've had an unwritten policy for sure on driveway approaches. So while we are going to go ahead and pave this street, I'm sure there could be some unpaved approaches.
Correct.
That's gonna be part of our cost.
Yep, just as Jim, having had experience on the engineering side of our road projects in the past, knew that that had to be included, so the, any unpaved approaches will be put back in concrete, just like we've done on all other road projects.
And John, I'm not real sure, but you included in our packet, is it three different styles?
I just wanted to show, we talked about the three different styles in the background brief, and I should've started in your packet, the middle. If you look on the middle section of curb there,
Yeah.
to the left, it says four-by-24 roll curb. That's the four-inch roll curb. So it's, the center one is the one we're recommending on this project.
Okay.
The top one is our normal six-inch highback curb.
Yeah.
And the bottom one is kind of the valley curb. The top one is preferable to DPW. It keeps, gives them a guide when they're plowing 10 inches of snow and keeps them out of the front yards. The bottom one certainly has its advantages because it probably, you can not lower the road as much by doing that, but it doesn't give that guidance to the DPW, and it doesn't, in our opinion, also have kind of that finish look like some of the others do as well. But it's, you know, so we felt that middle of the four-inch roll curb does give some of the guidance, plus at the same time limits the amount of undercutting that we need to do with that road, and please, for the engineers and the audience, if I'm not saying that correctly, jump in and correct me.
Okay.
Yeah, I would agree on that gutter style. I have that on our street, and it is nice, able to get in and out of your yard if needed, to do projects, and it's just more accommodating that way.
Okay. Right now, we have a 21-foot street, wide street. We're going to 31, back-to-back. Right now, is there parking on Pound at all? Is that signed?
It's not signed currently.
It's not signed, but nobody parks out there normally, do they?
Correct.
Yeah, you take your life in your own hands if you park down that street. So, we're gonna have to make a determination, more than likely, whether or not we're gonna allow parking since we're adding, basically, you're adding another lane.
Standard practice now is to not sign it unless it becomes an issue.
Okay.
So unless council felt we needed to sign it, we wouldn't sign it initially.
So there are 31-foot roads out there with parking on both sides?
Is there? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. The other thing is, is we've all heard nightmares about the speeding and everything else that goes on. We know our police department's been over there many, many, many times. We're gonna make it a nice raceway now, and that's what some people are afraid of. Has there been any consideration to how we can control the speed out there? Has there been, in other words, is there any consideration at all? I don't know that we've gotten that far in the planning.
Not that far, other than we can always do, like what we did on South Forest of doing some selective enforcement to get out there. Other ways of doing that is planting trees, and as the economy allows us to kind of put back in the tree planting program, some of those streets that have a little more wide-open look to them, the more trees you plant, as we've been told, like during the Streetscape project, those vertical elements of bringing it in also help in general to slow things down. So there's a couple of things you can do, but certainly, any new road, you know, Forest, Dow, part of it is getting out there and enforcing.
How about sidewalk, since we're gonna have enclosed?
The, much like we've done on a lot of our recent projects, even though we don't have the general fund money now to do a SWIP program, the sidewalks are being placed in the proper location through the driveway approaches, so that at the future year, when we have the financial ability to do a project, a SWIP program again, everything will be set up ready for that. The cross slopes in the driveways in the area of the sidewalk will be done
Good.
so that they can accommodate easily without having to go back and tear things out.
Okay. How about timeline? Do we have a finish date, a start and finish date by chance?
Well, we're anticipating a spring start, and it'd be most of the construction season to finish the project.
It'll be very more, if you look back at the last few projects, not as bad as South Forest, but it will be a complete reconstruction project. You'll be installing curb and gutters where curb and gutters didn't exist, and you will also be doing a water main project, so you'll have underground. So, much like we've done in the past, probably our past practice for the last, oh, at least five years, has been to have public information meetings beginning in March, so that we can meet with the residents, identify the concerns and problem areas, and address that. It will be a long project, unfortunately, just due to the nature of what we're installing out there. It's not gonna be, what was last year's, Dow Street or the, what was it?
Clarkston.
Clarkston Lane before that, where, boy, you turned around and those projects were done. Unfortunately, this is not gonna be that type of project. It's gonna be more, I don't want to say Forest or Division Road, because they had a lot, more work than this, but and certainly the city, it's gonna be longer, more difficult, and obviously, without kind of a lot of cross streets through there, administration's gonna have to come up with some clever ideas to make sure that residents know how to get to their homes at the end of the day.
I'm a little concerned with the good old days in September. It was gonna go that long. Is it feasible?
Well, it's hard to tell at this point, I would say, but.
It is, it's gonna be similar to South Forest, and I think it could probably go beyond good old days.
Okay.
Because you've got fully water main replacement, you've got fully the orange on the drawing, there's, you've got full, like, things that are storm sewer. So you've got two major facilities and sanitary repairs, and then you're in the road, so it's gonna take a fair amount of time to get full water main in, full storm sewer in, and set up for a roadway.
Okay. 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 Any other questions?
I have one. I'm, um, we're enclosing the ditches, and I know there's a lot of standing water, so how will, will that, I mean, that'll go into, I'll let it go on. I'll let you answer.
Didn't mean to cut you off, Jamie. I apologize. There'll also be some yard basins similar to some of the other streets that we've done, placed on the opposite side
Okay.
of where the sidewalk would be.
Okay.
Is that? Yeah.
Okay, 'cause it looks like the road is higher than the yards in some areas.
But it's all getting lower.
But it will, okay.
But still, sometimes it's just, without him doing this, you know, going up and down the more sides to try and keep it relatively even. You've got different grades on each side, so you can make it fit on one side, sometimes it's a little more challenging on the other. So that's all being looked at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And I think we had that kind of similar issue. Was it Richwood Lane?
Yeah.
I think, where we had to go in and install some yard basins that we then graded to collect different yards.
Okay, fantastic.
Something that's happening, you can't get the road totally below, there's gonna have to be those yard basins, and for some of the water that's there, you need a little pointer. But right now, all the, oops, I thought it was a pointer. Maybe I'm not gonna use the pointer. Okay.
He was so close to being so cool.
Right now, all the storm water that really starts up here, the only outlet, this, the storm water goes all the way down here, comes all the way down to race, just after this turn, before it goes to the July drain. With the easement the city got, the major part of the storm water that's gonna be starting to come here, that's gonna be going into these basins, coming down here, and the city got an easement here, and we've got a new outlet going to the July drain. So all the water that was coming down here impacting the area down here isn't gonna make it down here anymore.
Okay.
So it's gonna be cut off and go to the new outlet to the July drain, so basically, there's gonna be probably half as much water coming this way to the outlets that are there that we're backing up, just because water, the ditches were acting a little, as many retention basins holding the water back, because the outlets weren't big enough here, but by peeling it off here, that allows all this storm water to go out into the existing outlets.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And we have a resident that's giving us that easement for a dollar.
Oh, wonderful.
Very nice.
That's very nice.
Very nice. Any other questions?
I just wanted to inquire about the possibility to kind of continue on with the speeding, 'cause I know that is a major concern as it is now. Would speed bumps be completely unacceptable or something that could be considered?
Normally, on a roadway, I'm not sure, speed bumps, they've become very problematic with plowing, but there's other alternatives. We might be able to look at some things. And I've really researched, somebody down at this end of the table mentioned possibly like where Karen comes in, some of the other side streets that we have in town, we have a three-way stop. You know, at least that way, you pick a point somewhere in the middle there and
Yeah.
create a stop sign. So I think there's some alternatives. Certainly, administration will take a look at some of those alternatives.
Keep our eye on that. Anything else? Go ahead.
Well, you know, I'm glad to see this is happening. I've been on Pound for 13 years. I think much of the time, I've heard from people, "When is this thing gonna get done?" And we have continued to push it off so we can get the money together to do it. And obviously, from the pictures and anyone who's been down Pound, you can see it's time, especially since it's on a four-inch water main. But, you know, the other thing that we have upon us is that although it's great the legislature finally pulled the trigger and made a decision about road funding, that additional funding's now gonna, you know, take up some of those contractors, and I think what we've already experienced is gonna be even more once that money actually flows in, in the next few years. So getting out ahead of that, you know, I think it's worthwhile to knock this one off before it escalates too much.
Absolutely. Anything else? Anything from our engineers? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Moving on to item number four, consideration of adopting Resolution 2015-15 ADA Ramp Improvements, Curb Extensions at M19 and Monroe. Mr. City Manager?
Council is scheduled to consider approving Resolution 2015-15, which provides MDOT with an acknowledgement that council, with council's desire to see pedestrian bumpouts utilized along Main Street. As we've talked before, and I've sent some things out to the council, one of the original versions of the Streetscape showed using pedestrian bumpouts as traffic calming and pedestrian safety measures throughout Main Street. As we begin to develop and finalize some of the conceptual plans for those, and Jim has been working with MDOT, we know that when we go to submit our permit to actually be able to do that work in the state trunk line, MDOT wants to make sure that it's not just Jim and I asking for those, that there's an acknowledgement by the legislative body that that is something we want to see in this community. As I mentioned in the background brief, and we kind of gave a conceptual plan of how it would work at, for instance, Monroe and Main, the bumpouts do shorten the distance from how far a pedestrian has to actually cross lanes of traffic. So that's a pedestrian safety feature of them. It also, when somebody's turning left at one of these intersections, the cars behind them can't simply just pull around into the parking lane and pass them. So it also platoons traffic and has kind of a traffic calming effect due to that. The flip side is, when you're plowing snow, sweeping, things like that, more care has to be taken. So there is a downside to them as well. MDOT wants to make sure that Richmond is aware of that before they sign off on an application. So that's what this resolution does. The finalized, exactly where they'll be used or configuration can be worked out with the Streetscape Committee and Council, but this is a piece of the puzzle that we know we'll have to have when we submit for permits.
Very good. Is there a motion before discussion?
I make a motion to approve Council Resolution 2015-15, a resolution acknowledging city council's desire to use traffic calming and pedestrian safety measures such as pedestrian bumpouts along M19.
Support.
Motion's been made and supported. Discussion. It's something that has been on the drawing board for a long, long time. Historically, MDOT, we did try to get it done, and other communities had done it, and it works. They said we couldn't do it. So it's probably been 10 years, maybe a little longer.
Maybe longer, I think, yeah.
But now they're deciding that we can do it. So if nothing else, it gives the, as John has already stated, it gives MDOT the understanding that the city council's behind it. Now, if we can let Streetscape look at it and work with, you know, DPW engineering, whatever we need to do there to make it right, then that is what we are doing tonight and only doing tonight. That's all gonna come back to city council eventually for approval anyhow. So. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. Okay, our final item for consideration is consideration of tennis court reconstruction project. Mr. City Manager?
Yes, our final DPW item tonight.
Yes.
The tennis courts have been in the Recreation and Tifa budget for the last couple of years to make some repairs out there. And recently, I'd asked Public Service Director Gutsinger to go out and kind of finalize the scope of work and some cost estimates to make the repairs out there. Over the years, the city has done some minor repairs, hoping that it would have a big impact, and it just has not. In order to kind of fully take care of the issues and have courts that last and fixes that last, we need to, one, properly install drainage in the area of the tennis courts. Then, number two, there were a couple of options that we put together. One would be, kind of option one, was a overlay on both sets of courts. Option two was an overlay on the older courts, which are the set closest to stone, and then reconstruct the newer sets of courts that are more towards Beebe Street. And then option three is kind of replacing both sets of courts. There's three boards that we've taken this to now, with council being the third. The first was Tifa, the second was the Rec Board. At the Tifa Board, they looked at the options and felt, based on how we ended their fiscal year, in a desire to fix them once and for all, they wanted it known that they would be willing to fund option three, which completely fixes or renovates the existing asphalt, removes the asphalt and puts three inches back. It also installed, all three options, we did the scope of work in such a way that it improves the drainage, no matter what we do. We then took that to the Recreation Board, and they also concurred with the Tifa Board that option three was the most desirable option. that option three was the most desirable option. And so we have kind of the scope of work for each of those three options, as well as preliminary cost estimate for all three. And then on the final page is a map showing the courts. In the map that's in your packet, the courts towards the top of the page, which is BB Street, are actually the newer courts. Those newer courts actually sit lower than the two older courts, which has also probably contributed to how bad they've cracked over the years. With that, I'll turn it over to get the input of the council.
Okay. You have a motion before further discussion?
I make a motion to authorize administration to move forward with bidding out the tennis court repairs under option three.
Support.
What's been made and supported, discussion?
Well, I was on the recreation board a long time ago, for a long time, and this was always an issue, constantly an issue. The drainage is an issue. It's tried to get repaired, we've tried to patch it many, many times. I think just a complete, I agree with both the Tifa and the recreation board that a complete tear down and build back up is really the only way we're going to solve this problem once and for all.
Any other discussion? Comments?
I also agree, being on the Tifa board, this was a lengthy discussion that we had, that's probably one of the longest meetings they've had in a long, long time, they commented on, so we went over it quite diligently. It, it also, we came to the conclusion that something had to be done and done the right way, and we even looked at moving them in different locations, that wasn't an option, trying to do something with the schools, the schools aren't in a position to do anything at this point with us on any other projects. So I think moving forward, the only thing that would, you know, I'd like to see is where, you know, we're doing this extensive work, trying to look at, you know, fencing, upgrading, lighting, that type of thing. I know majority of it's going to go to redoing the courts, so that might leave out the lighting for a while and the fencing, so, but if there's any options that we can do in the future on that, that'd be great, so.
And certainly, I, I think in the budget, we had both resurfacing and lighting the same year. My intention is that next year would be the lighting project. We may have to, one, you can't, even if you light them properly, you can't play on the courses they are, so you need to get the surface fixed, but we also know that given the use of the courts, a lot of people need to, to be able to fully utilize that surface, some of it needs to be at night, and so it's going to be my intention to put that lighting, if there's not funds in, in the budget this year, that that's in the budget next year for Tifa.
Been a long time spent in the budget and haven't gotten done.
Yeah.
Probably a good thing now that we're going to finally fix the courts properly. Some people question the, the old court, which has been there for probably almost 50 years. If you look at the picture that was provided us, and look where it says Stone Street, and right at the end of street on the T there, you see a spot. That spot has been there for 50 years. There's a sinkhole there. Every time that has been resurfaced, repaired, whatever you want to call it, it sinks right back down again. So I don't know what you got in there. I don't know if you have an old tree base in there, or what's, something's wrong with that spot. I've been on those tennis courts for a number of years, up until the last probably 20, but I lived on those tennis courts, and no matter what they did to them, that spot always came back. So something, something is undermined, or we have a leak in the sewer, I don't know what's under, if there'd even be anything under there, Jim, but something's wrong with that spot, and I'm afraid that we're going to go ahead and do this and put the drainage in and everything else, we're still going to have a sinkhole there, or whatever has caused that problem over a 50-year period that I know of. So if you would, maybe special attention to that. But now, in your brief, you said you will be eliminating that sidewalk between the historical society and the new courts so that you can get in there with drainage?
Well, the intent would be to remove it and replace it.
Good, good, okay. Are we basically going to drain all four courts?
Well, the intent would be to put underdrain around as, as much of the perimeter in between the two as, as we could. So along Stone Street, you can't really fit in there, but everything else would receive underdrain to try to drain the subgrade.
One of the things that I've noticed over the years is some of the courts, Armadas one, I think the other one was, I'm not sure if it was Emily City, but Yale, somewhere up there where we, where we played softball during the spring, their courts are, the newer courts are all raised quite a bit higher than the area around it. And my question would be, being we're so close to Stone Street, is there any intention of raising that surface?
Well, the hard part is with the existing fence, without doing a hundred percent new, you're kind of tied in, as far as, we don't want to raise it too much up on the fence, and so it makes it a little tougher there, so our intent right now, no, is not to raise the courts. And Stone Street is, the, the older courts are high enough that I don't believe there's much benefit in raising those further.
Okay.
The other courts, the newer courts are, are a little low, so we are going to try to raise those a few inches, but by adding the underdrain and kind of swaling the, away from the courts a little bit, I believe that we should correct that problem.
Okay, all right. As Dennis said, Tifa did look at all the other angles, there have been a discussion in the community by some people about using that for parking rather than to put the courts there, but I believe it's been looked at closely enough by all the bodies that have taken a look at this, and it needs to remain where it's at. And I had, and John had a meeting with the superintendent, and as Dennis said, there, there's no money at this time to do any courts over at the schools. And we've, we've also looked at that, and the, there's no benefit to the city to put the courts on school property. It's better to leave them on city property where we have control of them, and it's not putting anybody on our school campus that maybe shouldn't be there using public property. So we've looked at, I believe, at all angles on this issue before we've brought this finally to the council table for final voting, so. I'm very comfortable in what we're going to do, and I hope that it works. It's too bad we don't have the where to to put in two more courts. It would be even better, there's times when the courts are all used, especially at night, and I certainly hope that the lighting is a priority, because that is one, other than the schools' use, I have seen the most use of those tennis courts at nighttime, and the lighting has been very poor that we've had over there the last probably 15 years or so, to be able to play at night. So. Any other discussion? Be you not? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion does pass. City manager's comments, sir?
Just like to thank the volunteers that we had, Sue, Susan Keel and Melissa Matrazak from our recreation board did the tree in, in the council chambers, as well as the Christmas tree in the lobby. I want to thank them for the time, many, many hours that they spent working on those two trees. Also want to thank the, everyone involved that participated in the tree lighting to make that a nice event. Both the McComb Daily and Voice have the photos up on the website, also on our YouTube channel, it's up already there, so if you happen to miss it Friday, you can see it online. And then just a reminder for council to get your January calendar pages back to me for the workshop.
Very good, thank you. Move on to council comments, Dennis?
Oh, I'm just trying.
Jeffrey?
Just being, it's December 7th, it's a day that will live in infamy, remember to take a moment to think about that, and all the lives that were lost, and everyone that gave their lives after that, one of the greatest generations, you know, fought for our freedom.
Absolutely.
And then also just wanted, also to acknowledge this time of year, that we have the Christmas tree decorations go on, all the people involved in the Santa Parade, the Christmas decorations, volunteers, a lot of people who make it nice around here for the Christmas holiday.
Very good. John?
I'm Nelson.
Emily?
I agree that lots of things goes out to all the volunteers for the Christmas parade. It was a very fun event, we had decent weather too, which was nice, it's been cold past few years. Also, I wanted to mention that the library is having its annual bake sale this, December 13th, or, I'm sorry, December 11th is when the bake sale starts, and Santa will be coming to the library as well.
Good.
And I just want to thank the, all the volunteers for putting up the Christmas decorations, the town looks wonderful, and the tree lighting ceremony was fantastic, and it was great to see both the recreation and the library still working together on that event as well, so I appreciated that, and thank the, the directors for, for doing that too.
Good. Michael?
I concur with all the comments, yeah, the tree lighting ceremony was fantastic this year, as always, and had a real good turnout, great weather, so it was great to see the community come together for that event. Shout out to our former council member, Jim Schultz, for still putting that on and, and making sure that it, it continues to be a great event.
I thought he was going to quit doing that.
Yeah.
He was saying that that night also.
Yes, he was, yeah.
Three, he'll see in 364 days.
Yeah, yeah. So yes, and I concur with everything that was being said. Also, we had a great city auction at the DPW, we made some money there on some excess property that the city owned, and that was always nice to see that we had a little money put back into the coffers there of the city. The, I had the opportunity to speak to the Cub Scouts on December 2nd, and it's nice to see that Cub scouting, Boy Scouting is alive and well in Richmond. It was a good time, they got to sit behind the thing here, and they were having a lot of fun. And then we talked about the history of Richmond and how the council operates, how our former government operates, and I held them for about 10 minutes. They were 78-year-olds, I was losing my crowd there. But anyhow, it went over very well, we had a lot of fun, and I enjoyed myself also. The fall sports are over with, we did very well overall in Richmond, and now we are into our winter sports, and looking forward to another great season for all the students in Richmond schools, and I'm looking forward to watching some of my family that has moved back to Richmond after many, many years, playing in the high school sports, it's just, it's, it's just, it's a ball to be able to go, and it also gets me back in the school. And I'm getting, I'm, that's something I haven't had for a number of years now, since I got off the school board, and now that I have grandchildren over there, it is nice to get back over there and, and participate in what's going on in our schools too. They're doing a great job over there.
Maybe the new tennis courts will get you back out there too.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but I'm not quite sure. You know, I just feel that way. Or I could take up bicycling like our engineer does, and what was your last trip? How many miles? 65 miles? That's fantastic. Okay, we don't have, oh no, you're hiding it over here on me. See? I knew it was here someplace, I couldn't find it. Okay, we, our, our police department, again, will be holding shop with a cop on December 19th, there's one at 8:00 a.m. and another at 12:00 p.m. And it's a great program that our police department puts on for those in need during the Christmas time. The Richmond Lennox EMS will be having a blood drive on January 5th at Rich, Richmond Township Offices out on School Section in M19, that is Tuesday, January 5th, from 2:00 to 8:00 p.m. We go to our calendar, today being the 7th, we have cable commission meeting tomorrow night at 7:00 o'clock right here at City Hall, the planning commission will be meeting on the 10th, this Thursday at 7:00 o'clock at City Hall. And as Emily mentioned, the Friends of the Library Cookie Sale will be held on Friday, the 11th, you got to get there early if you want to get any cookies. I think the Friends are going to be doing something too, I saw you had the news letter down there from the library, I think the Friends, are they having a, a book sale also during that time?
The Nearly New Book Sale, yes.
There it is, right there. Yeah, Nearly New Book Sale, okay. So there's fundraising going on by our Friends of the Library also. Is that all held all at same time? Yes, on Friday, December 11th, from 1:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night at the Lois Wagner Memorial Library. Then we have the next regular scheduled council meeting will be held on the 21st of December, it's two weeks from tonight. City Council and administration will be working together to provide an open house for our new city hall and police department, the renovation of the former state police post. That will be held from 6:00 to 8:00?
Correct.
On the 21st. City Council, that's a normal city council meeting, we will be holding that meeting at 5:30, so that we can get our business taken care of, and then have the open house from 6:00 to 8:00. That is on the 21st, please come down and see us, see what we've done here with this building, and I think it's, it's, it's worked out very, very well for, for us to renovate this building and utilize it, and it looks like we're utilizing just about every, every square inch already. But anyhow, that's an open house on the 21st at 6:00 p.m. The city hall and the library and the community center will all be closed starting on Christmas Eve Day, and will reopen on Monday, the 28th, and then again, it will close on New Year's Eve Day, the 31st, and reopen on Monday, January 4th. But we will meet again on the 21st. I don't know that there was anything else on the calendar?
There's one, the EDC is having a special meeting on Tuesday, the 15th, at 7:00 p.m.
Yes, yes.
7:00 p.m.?
Yep.
On the 15th, EDC will be meeting here at City Hall. Okay? Seems like there was something else. Oh, Streetscape.
We have a Streetscape committee.
Streetscape Committee is getting together, believe it or not, on the 22nd of December. It was the only time.
5:00 p.m.
It's going to be 5:00 p.m.?
Yes, everyone's gotten back to me, and everyone so far can meet then.
So that's on the 22nd, 5:00 p.m. right here at City Hall. Anything else we need to put on the calendar or announce? Okay? We move on to there is no closed session, is there any other business of the city council this evening? Be you not? Motion adjourned, be in order.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Support.
What's been made and supported, there's no discussion, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion passes. Thanks for being with us.